We could all stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I move for approval of the agenda. Yes, Meredith?
We would like to see you move the election of officers either to before or after the public hearing but before study session. If you decide to do it before the public hearing, then whoever is voted in would take over the meeting immediately. If you wait until after the public hearing, Allen would still preside.
I would like to amend my motion to approve the order of the agenda with item number nine moved to right after item number seven. Second. Vote, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
I move for approval of the minutes of the April 5, 2012, meeting. Second. Vote, please.
Okay, I might have done that too soon there. Okay, the motion passes with Commissioners Gildner and Bucknam in stating.
All right. Now we have the public forum. This is the time for any person to speak on any subject not appearing on the agenda. If you're here to speak regarding the case before us, I'd ask you to wait until we hear it. Anyone, Meredith, sign up? Okay.
No.
All right. Next item up is the public hearing, case number WZ-12-02, an application filed by IBC Denver Two LLC for approval of its zone change from planned industrial development and light industrial to mixed-use commercial TOD for property located at 5060 Ward Road. We have a presentation from staff.
For the record, Meredith Record Wheat Ridge Community Development Department. And joining me at the staff table is Ken Johnstone, Director of Community Development, and Sarah Scholwalter. And they would be available for questions as well as myself. Case number WZ-11-02 is a request by IBC Holdings for a zone change from PID and I to mixed-use commercial TOD. Property is located at 5060 Ward Road. Again, present zoning PID and light industrial, comprehensive plan designates TOD site and mixed-use employment center. I would like to enter into the record the comprehensive plan, the zoning ordinance, case file and packet materials, and the contents of this digital presentation. The all-proper posting and notification requirements have been met, therefore, Planning Commission does have jurisdiction to hear this case. This is a copy of the aerial photo taken in 2010, and you can see the property outlined in red. It's got 52nd Avenue up at the top of the slide at this location, Ward over on the western proximity, and then along the southern boundary is West 50th Place. The southern portion of the property is zone PID. It's got about 10 acres and was the former home to the Jolly Rancher candy manufacturing plant. The current zoning is regulated by a PID that is in place, and the only allowed use on the property is for candy manufacturing. It's primarily vacant. You can see a couple buildings on the southern portion. This is a 20,000-square-foot warehouse and a couple other miscellaneous buildings further to the east. The northern portion of the site, which is sort of bifurcated by this line, is zoned light industrial. It has frontages on 52nd Avenue and Ward Road and is about four acres in size. It's currently vacant. So this is a copy of the same aerial photo with the zoning layers on it. You can see that, again, the property is outlined in red with 50th Place on the south, Ward Road on the west, and 52nd Avenue in the north. Again, that bottom portion, which is 10 or so acres, has PID zoning, and the northern portion is zoned light industrial. The zoning in the area is primarily PID or industrial, and there's a variety of land uses. To the south, it's primarily light industrial and some variety of auto repair types of businesses. There's some contractor storage, offices and yards, and then some RV storage, you can see. To the east, again, is a property zoned I, and it also has some RV storage on it, and then some various PIDs, which are primarily office warehouse, so on the city. The property is really, literally tucked into the northwest corner of the city with Ward Road being the boundary line between City of Wheat Ridge on the east and unincorporated Jefferson County on the west. And then to the north, 52nd Avenue divides the property on the south, City of Wheat Ridge. To the north is City of Arvada. This is a bird's-eye perspective. Again, property bounded by 50th Place on the south, Ward on the west, and 52nd Avenue on the north. In 2005, the applicant did submit a zone change request for a zoning to what we call PMUD, which is Planned Mixed Use Development. The request included all of the property we're talking about tonight and included a 17 parcel subdivision, in addition to an ODP and FDP. The intent of the development was to allow office warehouse types of uses in the first phase, and then some additional development in subsequent phases, some of which could have been residential. The zone change application was denied by City Council on November 14 in 2005. So I'm going to talk a little bit more about history on the property. We know about 2002, the candy production ceased operating. 2005, current owner buys the property, and then the zone change application is denied by City Council. But there are also a subsequent of events that occurred that do affect the property. Later sometime in 2005, the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy was adopted by City Council as a policy document. Based on some of the recommendations in that document, the city underwent an effort to do some sub-area planning in this area, and the Northwest Subarea Plan was adopted in 2006. In 2007, RTD really started to look a little bit more seriously at the establishment of this proximity for a light rail or commuter rail station, and they began their EIS process with some site planning efforts for the transit stop. In 2009, I-70 Kipling Corridor Urban Renewal Plan was adopted, and later that year, Envision Wheat Ridge, which of course is the city's comprehensive plan, was adopted. And finally, in November of 2009, a ballot initiative was approved removing the charter and height densities restrictions for a lot of the urban renewal areas in the city, including this parcel. And then finally, in 2010, the city adopts the new mixed-use zone districts. I will get into the details of some of those other policy documents a little bit later. Now I'm going to talk a little bit about the mixed-use zoning. So again, City Council passed the new mixed-use zone districts, of which there were four, in 2010. What we're considering tonight is a zone change to mixed-use commercial transit-oriented development, or MUC TOD. The intent of this zone district is for areas generally within a half-mile of a transit line or a station. It permits a wide range of uses to allow densities that would support transit ridership. It's intended to enhance connections, including pedestrian connections, and encourages quality, higher-density types of mixed-use development. So in this zone change process, this, of course, is the first step towards development of the property as a mixed-use development. Zone change is the first step. As you are probably aware, we're just really looking at the zoning. We don't have any plans we're reviewing. There are no building elevations to look at. It's just looking at the zoning. And assuming that that gets approved, the next step for a site that's over 10 acres, which applies, would be the concept plan. The concept plan is reviewed administratively. However, it does have a pre-application neighborhood meeting as part of the process. And the intent of it is for, it's a general development plan, shows access points, some general circulation, perhaps some general building pads and that kind of thing, but not very specific at all. Once the concept plan is approved, then they would go into a specific site plan, which is really more of the detailed plan where we're looking at landscaping and the architectural elevations and so on and so forth. It's at those two stages where we would start to look at things like technical documents such as traffic impact analysis, drainage plans, and so on. And of course, there's always the situation where we might have to go through a subdivision plat, and then finally, the building permit before any construction could occur on the I've laid out in your staff report some general standards for the MUC TOD. It is very similar to some of our other mixed-use zone districts, primarily the mixed-use commercial, which, of course, we did the rezoning down the Wadsworth Corridor to MUC. And essentially, a lot of the standards are the same. Building height, eight stories allowed for a mixed-use building, six stories for a single use. You see your setbacks. We're really looking more at form than actual location, but based on the height of the building, the setback gets greater. Required open space and landscaping, 10% for a mixed-use structure or development, 15% for a single-use development. And finally, architectural standards, which are somewhat similar to those outlined in the ASDM, including facade articulation, material variation, and so on. As far as uses go, again, just briefly, in the MUC TOD, single-family not permitted. Multifamily is permitted. Banks with drive-throughs are conditional use. Restaurants is permitted. Almost every drive-through type of use, including banks, restaurants, fast-food restaurants, and gas stations, would be considered a conditional use. Uses without door storage not permitted, and retail and office both permitted. So let's take a look at the property.
Meredith, I hate to interrupt you, but is this different than what was in our packet? Because in our packet, it talked about gas stations not permitted, and I think on that slide, it was gas stations conditional.
I'm showing it as a conditional use. I'm going to defer to Sarah. Not permitted.
So that's a mistake in my understanding.
So our packet on that, in fact, is accurate?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you, Dick. Okay. First slide, I'm standing on the west side of Ward Road, looking east towards 50th Place and the Ward Road intersection. This is a little bit further into West 50th Place. The sort of reddish-colored building on the left side of the image is that 20,000 or so square-foot warehouse. Now I'm at the end of 50th Place, looking north. You can see in the right side of the image some of the existing RV storage. And the sort of blondish building that you see in the background is an office warehouse on 52nd Avenue that you can see. Still looking north, getting closer to Ward. And then this is looking back towards Ward Road, a western view on 50th. Again, the property with the sort of the reddish-colored building is that warehouse on the subject site. Okay, north on Ward Road, property is off to the right. Little hard to take some pictures there. Again, you can see that warehouse building in the background, and then there's some piles of materials being stored on the property, moving upward, still looking east. Now I'm on 52nd Avenue, looking east. The property is off to the right, and on the north side, this is right in front of an office complex in the City of Arvada. Looking south towards the property across 52nd, this is the view from 52nd and Vivian, and looking back towards 52nd Avenue. Okay. As I indicated before, there was a series of actions that occurred by both Planning Commission, City Council, that have impacted, developed the developability, and has given staff some general guidelines when we're looking at development of the subject property. The first one was approval of the Neighborhood Revitalization Strategy. And again, the intent behind that document was to try to bring City of Wheat Ridge as a community of choice. There were goals within that document pertaining to upgraded housing stock, developing employment areas, and targeting underused properties for redevelopment. One of the recommendations in that report was that the city undertake a series of sub-area planning efforts to try to address specific areas, their constraints and their opportunities. So in response to that, we did go through an effort and ended up with the Northwest Subarea Plan. This is a copy of the preferred land use map with the property located right in this pinkish area. You can see that the pink area is showing a transit-oriented core with some adjacent commercial uses. Let's see. And again, it designated the property as potential for transit-oriented mixed use and encourages a grid of north-south street connections, and those are what are being shown in sort of this grayish-blueish color. In October of 2009, the city adopted Envision Wheat Ridge, which is the city's comprehensive plan. Again, you can see the TOD site, which is adjacent and sort of on the subject property, and is shown as being mixed-use employment center with, again, proximity to the city's TOD site. Attributes desired with this type of designation include a mix of uses centered around a commuter rail station, primary employment should be a major component, should include commercial, retail services, and multifamily housing, pedestrian-friendly setting, and so on and so forth. With this document, in addition to a couple other things that happened in 2009, it kind of sets the stage for what we're looking at tonight. Again, in 2009, the city adopted a new urban renewal plan for, it was called the Kipling I-70 Corridor, and it essentially covered the entire I-70 corridor and extended north to the city limit line and included this property. Again, it designated this property as employment and employment/ TOD mixed use. And then finally, the ballot initiative in November of 2009 lifted some of the heightened density restrictions designated in the charter for some of these urban renewal areas, which would allow us to try to get the higher densities to try to support this type of development. So finally, this is a picture of the RTD commuter rail station, which is superimposed on the aerial photo for the area. Again, the property in question, here's the RTD site, is located directly to the west of the rail station and then extends north up to 52nd Avenue. And again, this is part of the Fast Tracks Initiative that was approved by the voters that was to address issues regarding transit and bus service in the metropolitan area. This station is proposed to be on the north side of the existing freight tracks east of Ward Road, and the improvements associated with it would include a train platform, station with amenities, parking and bus drop-off, and some surface parking. And the Gold Line, which is what the name of the commuter line is called, is supposed to be in operation by mid-2016. Most recent update that we've got on the commuter line station approval is that utility construction is expected to start in May, and that we're anticipating submittal and review of 100% drawings within the next couple of months. There was a neighborhood meeting held in January. Five folks from the neighborhood attended. A lot of discussion about traffic, also sort of the anticipated use of the site, and then, of course, it always comes up, the relationship to the Gold Line and Emplyne Station. We did go on our standard referral process for this application. Most of the comments we received were general in nature because there really wasn't anything to look at at this point. All of the agencies have indicated that they can serve the property, with improvements, of course, installed at the time of development, and they are looking forward to seeing what those concept and specific site plans will look like in order to be able to better assess those. So, staff conclusions, and I've drawn these based on the criteria that we use to evaluate a zone change request. And my conclusions is that the property is currently underutilized, and that will be benefits to the city if the zone change goes through, particularly economic benefits, and also kind of starting that whole vision of the TOD development in the area, that there are changing conditions due to the proposed construction of the end-of-line stop, that there's consistency with the guiding documents that would include the Northwest Subarea Plan, the Urban Renewal Plan, and also Envision Wheat Ridge, that the proposed zoning is not inconsistent with the area zoning and land use. Yes, it's a different classification, but some of the uses allowed would be quite consistent with what is in the area. All agencies can serve the property, and finally, that traffic and drainage will be assessed at the time of concept and specific plan stages. That does conclude my comments. We are giving a recommendation of approval, and there are no conditions attached to that.
Any questions for Meredith?
Just two quick questions, please. Both are regarding the station, the proposed station. First one is, it looks like, based on the aerials and the diagrams, the actual station and its associated parking is not part of this subject property. Is that correct? It's just to the east?
Well, there is a little bit.
Is there a little piece of overlap?
Yeah, there is. Let me put that up again. I don't have the property outlined, but it essentially is 52nd and then kind of swoops down. So some of the parking is shown as being on the, on top of this parcel, and there are negotiations with the landowner by RTD to try to negotiate acquisition of that.
And then my other question has to do with, there's an existing park-and-ride further down Ward Road in I-70?
Yes.
Is that going to be relocated or moved? I mean, is this envisioned to be the main park-and-ride?
It's not proposed to be moved at this point. Ken, do you want to elaborate?
It is proposed to be decommissioned, and if you look at the station plan slide, you can see that there's quite a bit of space for bus circulation. They really want to get people to this station, both through the parking lot, but also the ridership will come from, they have, I think, six or seven bus bays that are planned so that they can, there'll be a variety of routes that would end up here for people to then board the commuter rail to get into downtown Denver.
Okay. Is the existing park-and-ride, is that in the city right now, or is that unincorporated?
City.
Yeah, it's in the city. Great. Thank you. No more questions.
Dick?
I changed my mind. I do have one question. Is it all surface parking at that park-and-ride? Or is...
It is all surface parking at the existing park-and-ride further south.
But proposed, is still all surface parking, once RTD builds out?
It's currently proposed as surface parking. We do have an intergovernmental agreement with RTD that preserves the opportunity to partner with RTD, whether it be the city or some other entity, other private entity to create structured parking, to create more of a shared parking concept and a more, you know, efficient land use pattern. So that's an option and one that we'll continue to pursue, but RTD is basically committed at this point just to build the surface parking lot. That was what was approved in the environmental impact statement.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay. Meredith, could you remind us again of the zoning to the south? What is that, and what's the current use down there? Just directly south of 50th Place?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and put that slide back up. Okay, so 50th Place is right here, and of course, the property we're looking at tonight is outlined in red on the north side. It's primarily light industrial, kind of that darker purple color, and there's a variety of land uses in there. Many small businesses, as you can see from the property lines that are shown on the photo. Those include auto repair. There's some general contractor office and storage types of uses, some boat and RV storage.
Okay. And any idea of future use, anticipated future use for those?
Well, we can take a look at some of the documents. So for one, again, you know, this is the structure map of the comprehensive plan. It is supposed to be general in nature, and it's also being shown as employment center and TOD site. So hopefully, you know, as things sort of start to gentrify and change over, we'll see some more of the kind of complementary uses to the mixed use that's being proposed with tonight's proposal.
Okay. I'm just asking mostly in relation to how, excuse me, how this rezoning might impact businesses that are surrounding it in terms of current use, future use. Dick?
Will those existing businesses have to undergo any change, or will they be legally non-conforming?
I'm going to look at Sarah on this one. My thought is that they're legally non-conforming, and you want to elaborate a little bit, Sarah?
Well, they're not, I'm sorry, the businesses that are to the south?
Right.
Right. They're not being rezoned, so they're, so they won't have to change in any way. They're not part of this rezoning application.
If they were to come in with a zone change to mixed use where you saw some of those auto uses are conditional uses, they would be considered non-conforming at that point?
Yes, that's correct.
Just considering this, since this is the first multi-use rezoning we're doing in that area, if, you know, I just wanted to make sure we're considering how this precedent might impact future rezoning requests later on. Also, do we anticipate any issues with RTD acquiring the land if this parcel is rezoned mixed use? Will that present any obstacles to RTD and the landowner conducting their...
I'll probably defer that to the landowner.
Okay. Any other questions for Meredith? Okay. Thank you very much. Could we hear from the applicant?
Is this okay? Okay.
If you could give us your name and address, please.
For the record, Brian Mott. Our business address is 1101 West 48th Avenue in Denver. I'm not sure I have a lot to add to Meredith's report. I mean, I thought it was very comprehensive, and I guess the one thing I would add is we're excited to be applying for a rezone that's very consistent with, I think, the vision of the city and that you all have been working on for many years. And so with that, I would just offer to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for the applicant?
I'm happy to address that one question on RTD if you'd like me to.
Yeah, that would be great.
There's a little hook, if you can see that on the east side of our property, that's sort of a radius, it's an old rail spur. RTD is interested in acquiring that land from us. It's about .9 acres, roughly, and there's been a lot of dialogue here in the last 45 to 60 days with their appraiser. They've, we've engaged an appraiser at their behest. I don't think it's going to be contentious at all. Matter of fact, I think we're in the final stages of that. We haven't sat down and talked about numbers yet, but the methodology to appraise the land, I think, is pretty well-understood by both sides, so I'll be very surprised if we're very far apart. And because it's a fairly de minimis piece of the overall site, I don't anticipate that's going to be much of a problem at all.
But in terms of if the land is rezoned, the sale isn't necessarily conditional upon that, or would it impact it one way or the other?
I'm not an appraiser. I'm not qualified in that respect, but what I've heard from both sides, ours as well as theirs, is they can't take into account the prospective rezoning in valuing the land. What they have to do is to take into account the current zoning. So both of them have said the same thing, and it seems that that will have no impact.
Okay. Any other questions for him? Okay, great. Thank you. Meredith? Could I have the sheet, please? Thank you. So we have some folks who have signed our forms to come and speak for or against, or just to give comment, if you'd like to. You may. I'll just go down the list here. Kenneth and Mary Hance?
I'm Kevin.
Okay. That's fine. No problem. And Garth Gibbons? Did you have anything you wanted to comment on, or...
I really don't have enough information on the latest of my progress to comment at this time.
Okay. Great. Well, we're glad you could come, even if you don't want to comment. Well, we're glad you could come, even if you don't want to comment. That's why we have the public meetings, and we're glad you're here.
So it's just the rezoning, I'm just going to cite the...
Yes, sir, we're just talking about rezoning today. There are, there will be other steps in this process before the land is developed, and there will be chance for public comment and so forth at those stages. Okay, well, with no other comments, further questions for Meredith, or the applicant that might have come up? Okay. And I guess we're ready for a motion.
Let me get my glasses. I move to recommend approval of case number WZ1202, a request for approval of a zone change from PID and I-2 Mixed Use Commercial TOD for property located at 5060 Ward Road for the following reasons. One, the property is currently underutilized. Construction of Gold Line Commuter Rail Station will automatically change development potential of this property. The rezoning request is consistent with the Northwest Suburban Plan, the I-70 Kipling Urban Renewal Plan, and the Envision of Wheat Ridge. And four, the evaluation criteria support approval of this request.
Any discussion? Okay, I'll call for a vote then, please.
The motion passes unanimously.
Great, we'd like to thank the applicant and the city. Okay, our next item, election of officers. Meredith, it's been a year. Can you remind us how this works, please?
Well, this is what you might call a blind vote. People don't get nominated, and the people vote on them. What you each will do is have a ballot, and you will just write who you think would be the best person on the ballot. We collect them and count. The majority, the majority is the new chairman, and if we have a tie, we'll have to redo it. And then we'll do it first for chairman, and then secondly, for vice chair.
Okay. And I'm handing out, we're passing down some slips of paper.
Take two.
Oh, take two, here, can I have one more, Derek?
Take two.
I'll need one more.
I don't think we have to, because they draw the...
We'll pass it down this way. Here's another, you guys need more? You guys need more?
As a point of order, Mr. Chair, I would like to use the Chicago Modified Voting Rules, where we have four or five votes.
Four or five votes?
Yeah.
Wow, why? Do you have a reason for... Okay.
Are we doing chair first, correct?
I have to ask anyone.
Are you ready?
Four or five votes. Oh, now I get four or five. Sorry.
Who's stepping in the back?
Yeah, see, I'm so tired, I don't even understand humor right now. Okay.
One for Ann.
One for Ann. Oh yeah, she's not here. Oh, bad. Ann, if you're watching, this is a bad meeting to miss.
One for Dick. Steve Tims?
Uh huh. Uh huh. Two for Steve. Three for Steve.
Oh my gosh. Tims? So we've got four for Steve, one for Ann, so...
Okay, so I'd like to congratulate Steve, Mr. Chair. All right. Now, please fill out your ballot for Vice Chair. All right.
I'll think I'll start. Just wait. You?
Meredith, I just have a question.
Okay.
One for Ms. Brinkman. Two for Ms. Brinkman. Three for Ms. Brinkman.
And Dick Matthews, you've got three for Dick, and four for Ann.
All right, congratulations to Ann Brinkman, our new Vice Chair. All right, at this point, I will close the public hearing. I guess I should have done that before the election of officers, but that's okay. And we'll enter into study session.
And I think what we'll do is adjourn the adjournment.
Okay. All right.
Wheat Ridge Channel 8, keeping you informed on events in your community.